It got very quiet, I guess we're on. All right, let's go ahead and call to order the adjourned regular city council meeting for Monday, October thirteenth, 2025 at five fifty-nine-ish.
Six o'clock exactly.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby.
Here.
Councilmember Hibbard, absent. Councilmember Lowe.
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda.
Here.
Can you stand with me? I will lead the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation led by Mayor Pro Tem Doby. Oh, today's a good day to celebrate, and for our freedom and everybody else's freedom throughout the world, please join me as we honor our country and our flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I just thank you for today. I thank you for our first responders. I thank you for our fire, our PD. I thank you for our military. I pray protection, wisdom, and grace over each unit. And I pray especially for the leaders, not just in Los Alamos, not just in Orange County, and not just in California, but across our country, that we would all exercise due diligence with the responsibilities that we have sought out, that we would take these duties seriously, that we would be very mindful of the responsibility that rests on our shoulders, that we would use wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and especially discernment. I pray for those that are dealing with challenging things. I pray that you would bring peace, and that we would always find the joy. Every day, we would find something to be joyful about, so that we can remain in gratitude, because we have so much to be grateful for, especially as Americans. So I thank you for the honor that it is to sit on this dais. I pray for the wisdom from our colleagues, and I pray for just a peace. That is what I'm asking for. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'm assuming you're all here for the baseball game? No? Okay. Chief, come on up.
All right, thank you for joining us this evening. Today, we get the honor of swearing in a new officer for the Los Alamos Police Department. So I'm gonna ask for then-recruit and now-officer Grant Gibson to please come forward. Stand over here, please. I'll read your bio shortly about Officer Gibson. So born in the morning of May fourth, two thousand four, in Los Alamos, California, Officer Grant Gibson was raised by his parents, Jeff and Donnell Gibson, alongside his sister Claire and younger brother Jason. From an early age, Grant was drawn to competition, immersed in flag football, Little League baseball, and nearly every sport available to him. His drive to compete wasn't just about winning, it was a reflection of the values instilled by his close-knit, hard-working family. Grant credits his parents for sharing his strong moral compass. His father, a recently-retired police sergeant, and his mother, a dedicated school nurse, both earned deep respect in their community, something Grant aspires to emulate. As societal perceptions of law enforcement shifted, he learned early the importance of standing by his convictions while honoring his family's legacy with integrity. Though school was not his passion, Grant attended Pacifica High School, where his focus continued to shift toward independence and self-growth. The COVID-19 pandemic only reinforced his desire for non-traditional academic path. With support from his parents, he transitioned to an independent study program, allowing him to work full-time and begin building his own future. At just sixteen, Grant began working for a manufacturing company partially owned by a family friend. With no prior experience, he was warned of the physical and mental challenges ahead. Instead of deterring him, these obstacles became motivation. Though the early days were difficult, Grant eventually became a valued team member. That experience was not only taught him the value of perseverance, but also instilled a deep appreciation for struggle, growth, and self-reliance. Despite his success, Grant realized that a career in manufacturing was not his long-term calling. Feeling unfulfilled and drawn to a path of greater service, he made the courageous decision to pursue a career in law enforcement. Inspired by his family and driven by a desire to contribute meaningfully to his community, Grant embraced the uncertainty of his new chapter with confidence and determination. Now serving as a police officer with the City of Los Alamos, Officer Gibson is proud to continue his family's legacy of service. He welcomes the challenges ahead and remains committed to uphold the values of integrity, empathy, and resilience in every aspect of his role. Join me in welcoming Officer Grant Gibson. Not to be outdone, his badge will be pinned by his father, recently-retired Sergeant Gibson, who started his law enforcement career here in the City of Los Alamos. So please come forward. I'm hoping you know how to put one of those on.
The rest of the family can go up, too.
All right, now we get to do the oath, so I'm gonna turn this mic towards you.
I, Grant Gibson. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Without any mental reservation. For purpose of evasion. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. And that I will well and faithfully discharge. The duties upon which I am about to enter. The duties of which I am about to enter.
I'll ask, would you like to say a few words? You don't have to, but I will offer.
So sir, you started in La Salle, and then for some reason went over to the dark side? Still Beach? Yeah, that's not gonna happen again. No, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Congratulations very much. And next, we want to invite Captain Kane of OCFA to come on up in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. This year, Fire Prevention Week was observed from October fifth to October eleventh. This year's campaign, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Batteries in Your Homes, strives to educate everyone about how to buy, charge, and dispose of them safely. We encourage Orange County residents to check their alarm system and support the public safety activities in efforts during Fire Prevention Week. I'll give that to you.
Thank you.
Are you gonna speak?
I can, yes.
Yes, you are, absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and Council for having us here in recognition of Fire Prevention Week. We have a brief presentation for you about, really just the... It's kind of funny, the videos that we're gonna show are kind of worst-case scenario when it comes to battery failure, but surprisingly enough, it's not so uncommon, and what we in the fire service are finding is that this is happening more and more often, and so there are multitudes of things that kind of lead to the failure of the batteries. But what we're trying to really educate the public and the communities on is just best practices and safe handling when it comes to these batteries, to really decrease as best as possible the fire hazard associated with them. So as the mayor mentioned, last week was Fire Prevention Week, and the Orange County Fire Authority, in partnership with the National Fire Protection Association, pushed the campaign, as she stated, Charge Into Fire Safety, and if you take away nothing aside from these videos I'm about to show you, just really four key tenets when it comes to safe handling of these batteries. First is getting something that's been tested by a reputable laboratory, excuse me. Really, quality matters. So if you're buying something that is a total steal off of Amazon, then you'd probably start questioning whether or not it's something safe and something that you want to have in your home. Second is using the appropriate charging apparatus. Another, you know, something that you're getting off of Amazon and you're getting five cables for $2, you probably want to, you know, think twice about using those to charge any of these devices in your home as well. If you're charging something large, you know, with your phone, it's pretty much on everybody's bedside table. I don't know if we're gonna get away from that. But when it comes to your bike, your scooter, a hoverboard, don't do it in your garage, don't do it in your home. Put it outside, out of the sun, so in the event of some sort of failure, at least it will be outside and not in your home, and you'll see why here in just a moment. And then finally, just safe disposal. Don't throw it in the garbage. Make sure you're taking it to a hazardous materials recycling center. What most people don't realize is when it gets picked up from your curbside, it ends up in the back of a garbage truck, and then there's a compactor in there, and as soon as there's some sort of physical assault or insult to these batteries, the failure can occur, and it does not have to be charging. So although I will say that most likely it happens while it's charging, but that's not a be-all and end-all statement either. So we'll just get into these videos real quick here and see how fast do they fail. So you can see there's scooter there, and there's a guy just hanging out. You hear a little pop. He goes to investigate. He goes to unplug it, which is a good move, but then it fails.
Oh dear.
And so what they're finding is that's just not your run-of-the-mill smoke like you'd find at a campfire. The gases released in largest quantities are carbon monoxide and hydrogen, both of which are flammable, both of which are toxic, and both of which displace oxygen, so it's creating a very hazardous environment very quickly. So you can see there, it only took a matter of seconds for the entire compartment there to be filled with those gases and for it to ignite. So that really drives home, you know, make sure that you're charging those things outside at all times. Next, you can see here just batteries you would use in your power tools at home. I don't know that we're really gonna get away from charging them in our garage either, but I've shown this video to my wife, and we've had a long conversation about it, and we, at the very least, have to be home. We have to be aware of what's going on. Charge them until they're fully charged, and then remove them from the cradle, and then store them. And I know that we've really changed our, you know, our methods at home. We have kids, we have all manner of rechargeable toys and whatnot, and I get some eye rolls from time to time, but I do say, let's take it outside, and it's a little bit more inconvenient, but you'd hate for something like this to happen here. So you can see, not just was there fire, but there were actual sparks. It's slag. It's hot metal that's being kind of cast off of that battery. And so if any of you have a garage like mine, it's not as tidy as it maybe could be, and there's gonna be all kinds of combustibles there, and the end result is not gonna be good. We've had this happen multiple times. I'd say that a large part of the time, as long as you have that man door from the garage to the home closed, as long as we can get there, you know, as long as somebody recognizes it, we can save the home, even if the garage is total loss. So I would also recommend doing that at all times. Make sure that man door between the garage and your home is closed, always. Here you have a dog that's gnawing on, it's like a little battery bank, which we have these at our house as well for all the kids' toys and trips and whatnot. So that's a little extreme case, I'd say, you know. Just keep all these things out of reach of children and your dogs, but any sort of physical insult to these batteries can cause them to fail. So just dropping them, kicking them down the road. I know with all these toys, it is sort of remarkable, you know, little remote-control cars and whatnot. If they take a tumble, I start to question whether or not that thing should be used anymore. So that's really the long and short of it, and then you can also visit either ocfa.org or the NFPA organization website to find really those safe practices that I mentioned. But if you take anything away, as I said, something reputable, that's quality, something that you're utilizing the charger that came with the device, charging it outside and disposing of it properly. And hopefully, we can keep this instance like this to a minimum.
All right, the next, we're going to do the Mayor's Business Spotlight, and can I have Melissa from Stretch Spa come on up? I am not gonna try the last name. So the Business Spotlight Program is a free business recognition program designed to create awareness about the variety of local businesses located in Los Alamos. The Business Spotlight Program is a great way for the city to say thank you, showcase great businesses in La Salle, and also provide another tool to help our businesses grow. This month's recognized business is Stretch Spa. This evening's Mayor Business Spotlight shines on the Stretch Spa, a health and wellness destination dedicated to helping individuals improve flexibility, mobility, and overall body performance. This hidden oasis offers a variety of personalized stretching sessions, therapeutic treatments, and recovery services. The Stretch Spa provides a relaxing environment where clients can enhance movement, reduce tension, and restore balance to both body and mind. Would you like to speak and give a little bit more? You sure? You're shy. Well, where are you located?
Uh, we're located right on, what's on, in Starbucks or in some Starbucks?
In between Starbucks and Jimmy John's.
Oh.
There you go. Okay, perfect. So we'll go ahead and we can come on over here for a picture. Great, thank you so much. Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite Mr. Acosta to come on up. And you're gonna go ahead and talk about the next.
Thank you, Ruby. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and city staff. The city here and the police department is excited to partner with the Aiden and Aiden Safety Group for the Communities Come Together event. It's an excellent event. It's relatively, it's new to us. It's the first time we've had it, and just to explain it in detail, so I won't drag it on, is Ruby Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. My name's Ruby Garcia. I'm the founder of the 501(c)(3) Andy and Aiden Safety Group, and I am here to not only provide a little bit of background about our program, but also invite you all to the Communities Come Together event, which will be held at the Community Center here in Los Alamos on Oak Street on November fifteenth from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. All ages, all abilities are welcomed. We specifically designed this program for our special needs families who are looking to be safe in our community with the help of our law enforcement. It's a completely free event. We just try to ask families to RSVP, so we know how many reinforcers and things of that nature to provide. So just to give a little bit of background, how it all began. It was actually established on September thirtieth of 2022. The inspiration behind all of this were actually my sons, Andy and Aiden, and they are both on the autism spectrum, both different functioning humans, but not any less. They just learn differently. So I wanted to provide a safe space, not only for my family, but other families as well, that are special needs, to learn and engage in safety practices, allowing them to become more independent in the community as they continue to grow. The reason why safety is so important is, you know, if kiddos are not gonna drive, then they have to learn how to walk. So in order to walk, you have to practice safe crossing the street. Or if you get a job, if there's an emergency, learning when it's appropriate to call 911. We try to build upon every year a new safety strategy, so families can learn and expand their knowledge in our communities, can also grow their knowledge on how to become safe in our community. So our mission is pretty much to spread safety awareness in the community by boosting engagement and advocacy for neurodivergent individuals and their families. Our goal is to increase access to law enforcement and support them in providing education to best safety practices. We aim to help individuals become more independent by teaching safety strategies and helping agencies identify, interact with, and assist those families living with different abilities, so essentially calling just our event Communities Come Together, because we're all coming together. The one thing I can attest to in regards to our mission statement is after every city that we have partnered with, I have had chiefs, captains, even officers come tell me that they had no idea that sensory looks in so many ways. It could look like pacing back and forth, talking to yourself, humming, and so the program is doing itself, because not only are we engaging with PD, but PD's now understanding how we function out in our community and how we regulate. So we, how can we help as a community? So as a community, we're all responsible for treating everyone equally. We're living in a world where everything is unexpected and changing, so we want to be the people to bring the communities together and build a bridge where all special needs individuals are accepted, understood, treated equally, and given a chance at our lives. So let's educate ourselves to help them live in a community, because to live in this community, it really does take a village. Together, we can do, accept individuals, and also put ourselves in their shoes and look at their perspective, because sometimes not everything is what it looks like. So the benefits of working with law enforcement agencies is to engage the community through interaction and responses, proactive engagement of the community through our forums and safety events and meetings, and participation in the community functions as an important activity of the community level. Officers who have a basic knowledge of and regularly interact with special needs community are familiar of why individuals may behave or respond in certain ways. These officers are much more likely to use de-escalation strategies resulting in a greater positive outcome. Our events provide the building blocks to establish relationships with law enforcement and those that they serve with the community through interaction. So the sensory behaviors, as we all have sensory behaviors, and twirling around our hair, biting our nails, I mean, I talk to myself plenty of times throughout the day, running my to-do list. And so the types of behaviors officers and other agencies may encounter at our events are flapping of the hands, repetitive movements, self-injurious behaviors, vocalizations. And this will help kind of, you know, the reason why we call this out is because in our community, some of our neurodivergent individuals will pace back and forth because they're regulating, they're overwhelmed, they're overly stimulated. Sometimes they're talking to themselves, so for the basic "I," that might look like, oh, that person's not stable, or they might be on drugs. I think it's, oh, we gotta start looking at different perspectives and understanding that they might just be regulating. And so also, it is our responsibility as a special needs community to put ourselves out there, because in order for the community to really understand how we regulate outside in the real world, we have to be out there in order for them to see us. So the positive reinforcement is the key to let us in. A reinforcer is something that you earn a prize, if you will. So basically, what we have is we have reinforcers at the end of our events, so each family will travel to each safety station and receive a stamp from one of our volunteers. After they're done completing all of their stations, they will actually receive a prize at the end. It could be a bucket full of sensory items, stickers. We tend to have lots of fun activities for them as part of the reward. The reason why we want to use reinforcement is in order to do something, you have, in our world, you have to receive something at the end, so you did a great job interacting with the police officers, responding to their questions, and you attended, so now we're gonna reward you. So now there's not only a positive change in the fact that they finished the stations, but now they are receiving the reward from an actual police officer, and that relationship is starting to build. That trust is starting to build. I can say that when we first started this program, my son, Aiden, who's the youngest, would see an officer and run the other way. He was just very intimidated by the uniform. On the other hand, my son, Andy, will socialize with everybody. He doesn't know who you are. He'll talk to you. He'll approach you, no problem. Two different individuals, but as time progressed, my son, Aiden, became very comfortable and now can talk through his talker what his needs are to an officer, so that's really neat to see. So in our events, we actually use an alternative communication, an ABA. It's called the PECC system. It's a visual that's actually used in the school system as well. We pretty much piggyback off the PECC system, which is a system where you can get images, build schedules first, also create first-and-then schedules types as well, and they use us at school. So they might say, first, we're gonna come in and we're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance. They'll have someone there standing with the flag. Afterwards, we're gonna do math. Afterwards, we're gonna do this. Afterwards, we're gonna do that. So we follow the same protocol. For instance, in our crossing the street, we actually use the PECC images to build instructions on how to cross the street. So you want to look left, you want to look right, you want to look left again. Is there a car coming? Yes or no? So these images are very critical for our community, because that's the type of language and that we use, and so when we see those, we would expect that you want us to do something and you want us to pay full attention. So we use the alternative communication in that way. We also use a PREMAC principle, which is the first-and-then system. So first, you're gonna, you know, do the station, and then you're gonna receive a stamp. We also use this at our events when someone's going through sensory overload and needs a timeout. We can say, first, finish this station with Officer... We can say, first finished the station with Officer, so, you know, Officer Dan, and then you may have a break. So we're kind of letting them know, you're gonna finish this station with Officer Dan, you're gonna take a break, and then you're gonna come right back afterwards. So we're giving them the expectation of what their day looks like. And also typically, people on the spectrum like to know ahead of time what they're expected to do. They don't really like anything outside of the normal. So providing them the PREMAC principle of first and then is very, very helpful at events. So just to give a communities event overview, we work with law enforcements to create interactive events to provide safety strategies to the community. Visual tools for these events will be developed by us. We have a clinical team who is built of behavioral therapists, BCBAs, special education teachers, and gen ed teachers. We encourage participation all the time in common safety practices with law enforcement. And then we expand our safety events to other cities and communities, and we're looking to possibly to it statewide, just because I think it's a great opportunity to be, um, visible to law enforcement so they could understand how we are, but also provide it to our community more, more ways for them to be safe. And additionally, our sa- uh, you know, in addition to just, uh, PD, we've also extended our partnerships with Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County Fire Authority, and then also currently working on developing partnerships with FALC. And so the tools that we use in our events is books for storytelling. We use the schedule, uh, going back to the PEC system. Interactive training tools, we use a lot of visual posters, cue cards. We use the schedules, for example, um, priming, which means giving them the heads up of what's to, uh, come up if, if that assistance is needed. And then also positive reinforcements at the end for encouragement of participation. So we believe that by using all of these, we could get a successful interaction and get each participant to engage with law enforcement and learn how to be safe, um, in our community. So just some of our, uh, basic, uh, stations is, our first one is interacting with a police officer. So in this station is kind of the warm-up. Kiddos and adults get to interact with PD. They read out loud a, a book about how they keep them safe. They do like a little high-five, they just, it's just a good way to just, let's warm up before you go to your next station. Each station has a rhyme and rhythm and as to why we go in this order. So then we hop over to dialing 911. Um, in this station, uh, families will actually get to learn the importance of learning how to dial 911 and when it's appropriate through storytelling. So not only do we have a board of a smartphone with 911 being highlighted, kind of to encourage the individual to press it, but we also do storytelling. So, you know, do we call 911 if my brother cheats at a board game? No, no, we don't. But do we call 911 if our house is on fire? Yes, yes, we do. So we provide a lot of different examples, as much as we can, to let them know when it's appropriate to call 911. Our fan favorite is always crossing the street, and I think it's because we get really creative and build like a little mini-city with the sidewalk. And in this station, families get to learn how to cross the street using the visual boards. After they go through the visual boards, um, the police officer will then engage and ask somebody to volunteer, and they'll practice walking and crossing the street together in like the little mini-city that we've created. And it's always so much fun because then the whole family gets to join in. And then we also have our seasonal, um, safety stations, which is for Halloween, selecting good and bad candy. Typically, aft- when this, uh, safety station is part of the program, kiddos get to actually go and trick-or-treat, and then they meet the officers at the end and get to select the good and bad candy. The reward is you get to keep the good candy, but the bad candy goes out. So on top of that, we also do safe stranger and non-safe strangers. We also, uh, have a what to do when there's a fire in the home, what to do when you're lost in the community. So as we develop the program every year, we will switch out stations that we feel are more relevant at the time and take out ones that we just feel that, I think we need to move on from this one, we need to introduce some, a new safety strategy. And, you know, let's face it, there's just so much you can learn from safety, and it's always a never-ending cycle. I think it's always great that we have good, good stuff from all agencies. Personal safety is what to do when you're lost in the community and then, and also identifying safe adults versus non-safe adults. I know the one thing that I've learned in this journey is stranger danger is not really a thing. It's a safe adult or not a safe adult. So we provide visuals of a safe adult and a non-safe adult. Now, that gets a little tricky, right? So we actually use the what-to-do-when-you're-lost examples. So if I'm at Target and I'm lost, do I wanna ask the Target employee or do I wanna ask the lady pushing the cart? I would wanna ask the person at Target, because we just went through the steps of what to do when you're lost in the community, now it's time to put them into play. And so we kind of extend to that particular topic because there's just so much you can learn from that. And then sometimes we have a relaxation and parent exercise. So if kiddos are trick-or-treating or parents are being asked questions, kiddos get to relax a little bit and color and still engage with, um, police officers. In this picture, we have the SWAT team managing the coloring, um, uh, station. And we have Officer Hartman from West Minister asking the parents questions about, you know, when you lose your child, and, and this is something that I thought was a great addition to personal safety, is he would ask you the questions if your child were to become lost. And I can tell you, I failed all of them, which was really disappointing. But as a parent, I walked away knowing, these are the questions you get typically asked. Great to have them as, um, you know, in the back of your pocket, always thinking about it. So I think it's always not only a great way for our kiddos to learn, but also as, as parents need to understand too, what we're gonna be asked. And so typically in a department support, what this looks like is, you know, dedicated time. This takes about four to six months. This involves planning the stations, where it's gonna be at, um, you know, marketing, having conversations with families, uh, just kind of introducing the topic and encouraging them to attend. And also the location, securing your location, your station presenters. You know, we gotta make sure we, um, get some staff, and then also the tools. So for the future, um, as we move forward, we hope to continue our events, to strengthen partnerships in a positive way. And there is no power, uh, there is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about. So that's something to walk away from. And again, everyone is invited, hope to see you all there. Spread the word to anybody that you may know might benefit from this. So it'll be November 15th, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You could also follow us on our social media, the Andy and Aiden Safety Group, for more information about this event. Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. And Wendy, I must say, really important for the mayor's spotlight. Can you bring up the little video? It's a little teaser video, and then, um, the stretch spa will also get the full video that they can put on all their social networks. Great, thank you. And you'll get the full video, um, so you can use that as a marketing for your social platforms. Great, thank you so much. Okay, and our next presentation is from Public Information Officer at Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Brian Ren. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. It is, uh, my honor to congratulate the City of Los Alamos for once again, is this two or is this three for him? It's two.
It's two, I had to get the rules, uh...
Yeah, we had to get, we had to adjust the rules to make sure you guys could win.
No, no, up, they had to be updated, they had to keep it fair. I didn't cheat.
No, no, what we did was, Los Allo's a small city, it doesn't have the resources of, say, a larger city. So to be fair to all the cities in Orange County, we, uh, dev- uh, divided it to small, medium, and large cities. So what we're talking about is the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District. Uh, each year when mosquito season begins, we, we pit the cities against each other to see who can help out their residents the most. And in the small city category, Los Al- Alamos did the most to get the good word out about how to prevent mosquitoes and how to keep your place mosquito-free. Uh, our campaign title this year is Together We Fight, because mosquitoes don't care what baseball team you like, what kind of food you like, where you went to school, they'll just fly right over your neighbor's fence and bite you. So it takes everybody to get together and work together to fight mosquitoes. And I wanna thank you, Mayor Protem Dobie, Dobie.
Dobie, you hairy mosquito fan.
Dobie. And, uh, Wendy Quintanar, see, I know how to say her name, man. For her, for her great help, so, thank you. And, uh, may I present you with the plaque, ma'am?
All right, and our last presentation is for the Los Alamos Neighborhood Pres- Preservation Staff in recognition of Neighborhood Preservation Appreciation Month. All you beautiful people, come on up. You know, I've been getting more questions, you guys driving around, and they're like, what's that neighborhood preservation thing? I'm like, it's code enforcement, but we're a welcoming city, so it just sounds nicer that it's a preservation instead of code enforcement. But you guys do an amazing job making sure that everybody stays, um, within the rules of the city and, and, uh, good neighbors and everything. So we definitely do appreciate that. And then I'm going to go ahead and present you with this. And Wendy, come over here and go for it, do you wanna speak?
Yeah.
Go for it.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, directors. It's a pleasure being here with you tonight, although we were last, save the best for last, right? That's what it is. All right. It's an honor to serve you as Neighborhood Preservation, formerly Code Enforcement. Uh, it's a tough job, uh, but it's a highly rewarding job because we get to impact the community. We get to see our contributions after hard work, and we see the community enhance to the level of, sometimes it, it can be a great positive effect in the community, sometimes it's, it's something minor. But, um, it's a, it's an honor that you validate our contributions to the city and our work ethic here. And I'd just like to say Riley and George are amazing teammates. I couldn't do this work by myself. Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Riley gets the photo. Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Noda, you were supposed to speak, weren't you?
No, it's okay.
You're good? It's only the second inning, go on up, speak.
I'm gonna boot this.
Oh, you can talk and walk at the same time. All right. This is the perfect time to come forward to speak on any agenda item. Tonight's agenda includes one public hearing. Comments will be called for that hearing at the appropriate time. Comments will, will not be called individually for items and list, not listed as public hearings. Anybody wants to speak, please fill out a speaker card or sign the sheet at the podium. Anybody? Okay, a little shy group tonight. All right, updates from the mayor, um, a few things. We had our OCFA meeting. We also said goodbye to Lori Zeller, um, who I think started at OCFA when she was 13. Uh, she was our deputy chief, uh, she did all the finance, the business operations, and she was just phenomenal, and we will definitely, um, miss her, but a well-deserved retirement for her. I was able to open up the St. Hedwig Autumn Fest and get the appropriate funnel cake and tri-tip, which was great. Um, I attended the Rotary Wine Tasting over at the Navy Golf Course, which is always a lot of fun. And then I got the special, um, o- opportunity to, um, speak at the American Legion wall mural unveiling. If you haven't been by the American Legion, this thing deserves to be in a museum. It is absolutely gorgeous. Um, the artist that did it is a retired marine and army, and he was up there for at least six months on scaffolding at night and everything, and it is absolutely gorgeous. Um, I was also able to attend and speak at the Elevated, Elevate Women's Conference. Emilyn, every year, just continues to outdo herself. And I always like it when I look in the audience and I see women from other cities. That's cool, that means we're doing something right. We had, uh, somebody come all the way from Newport Beach, so you're doing a great job. The League of California Cities Conference was this week at Long Beach Convention Center. I did have, um, the honor of speaking in a session about small cities. Uh, we are trying to create a small cities group within the League of California Cities. Our small cities under 30,000 population are about 59% of the cities in California. I've heard cities' names, I, I didn't know we had an Albany in California. We have, yeah, so it was really good, very interactive, and, uh, very positive, because they're dealing with every, the same things that the big cities are, the state mandates. And state mandates usually aren't scalable. Um, so they just need the tools. Um, I was able to brag on our city about how creative we've been doing some of our things and how our staff, uh, wears multiple hats, uh, throughout the day. And, um, and most of the cities are in absolute agreement of that. And then finally, I worked the Taste for Los Allo, which was this last Saturday, which is always fun. Everybody's in a good mood, and, um, it was a great fundraiser for the high school and all their burst, booster clubs. And then coming up trunk or treat, the City of Los Alamos Recreation and Community Services Department would like to invite the community to attend the 14th Annual Memorial Care Miller Children and Women's Hospital Long Beach Trunk or Treat presented by Southland Credit Union. The free event will take place on Saturday, October 25th, from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Little Cottonwood Park. This spectacular event provides a safe place for families to celebrate Halloween. Guests will have the opportunity to participate in children's costume contests, pick their very own pumpkin until the supplies last from the free pumpkin patch, sponsored by Southland Credit Union, play carnival games, win prizes, visit trunks for candy, shop at vendor booths, jump on bounce houses, and ride the spooky train, enjoy the sensory activity area for our special needs kids we were just talking about, and purchase adult beverages from the Beverage Garden, benefiting the Los Alamos Community Foundation, and more. Families are encouraged to come dressed in their Halloween costume to the ever-so-popular Costume Contest. Costume Contest has five divisions, ages zero to three, ages four to seven, ages eight to 12, the family division, and the pet division, but dogs must be leashed. Thank you to our event sponsors, Memorial Care, Miller Children's Hospital, and Women's Hospital Long Beach as title sponsor, and Southland Credit Union as presenting sponsor, Will Done Group and Grocery Outlet, Long Beach Wardlow as gold sponsors. And then we also have our annual Halloween decorating contest. Decorate your home for the spooky season, the Los Alamos Recreation and Community The Los Alamos Recreation and Community Services Department would like to invite all Los Alamos residents to participate in the 2025 decorating contest. Registration is free and required to participate in the contest. Judge will take place, judging will take place on Tuesday, October 28th between 7:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. by local volunteer judges. Registration is required. Please visit cityoflosalamitos.org to complete the registration form. Winners will receive a $25 gift card for a local restaurant and a lawn sign to display in front of their home. A list of the winning homes will also be posted on the city's website and the City of Los Alamos social media accounts at City of Los Alamos. And that's all I have. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Nothing to report at this time, Mayor.
Really? Okay. Let's see, so now warrants. Per the council's accelerated warrant policy, staff will note questions and follow up after the meeting. No questions were received regarding tonight's warrants. Are there any new questions for follow-up before the next council meeting?
A motion to move them?
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Aye.
Councilmember Hibbert?
Absent.
Councilmember Lowe?
Aye.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next item is the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Would any of my colleagues like to pull an item? Anybody? Okay, can I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we are on for the public hearing zoning code update and unattended donation box regulations. And I'll go to staff for a report.
Evening, Mayor.
I just like doing this, it's fine.
I'm gonna ask Dr. Noda to give that report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor and members of City Council. Tonight, we are opening a public hearing to consider two ordinances. And one of the ordinances is basically cleanup language and adding of some regulations of thrift stores and donation boxes, front yard landscaping requirements, screening of mechanical equipment to correct some clerical errors and the other ordinance is concerning regulation of unattended donation boxes. Right? So the zoning of some, as you can see in the staff report, there's some recommending zoning code changes and a lot of it has to do with some cleanup language. I'm not gonna go to every single one. If you have something, if you have some questions, please feel free to ask. But the one is like the word live, you remove the required plant material, right? So it's just again cleaning up because we do allow turf, for instance, in a landscaping that's not live plant. So we'll clean that up a little bit, okay? Thrift stores as noted would make some changes concerning the location of thrift stores. There are some stuff that is required by the state that basically was saying that was passed in law in 2024 and of course became effective this year. But basically, again, I might go every single one, but thrift stores are allowed in the city and some of our languages that were recommended will put some guidelines on thrift stores. Again, there's a few bullet points in there. I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of them. Donation may only be accepted during business hours, no drop off of donated goods or, or may occur outside of business hours, for instance. And a lot of times that people will drop off stuff and then, you know, and then you're clanging, banging and making noise. So again, there's some language in there that, that, you know, dropping off, receiving, processing or disposal has to be falling within our chapter of our municipal code of noise. And so again, I'm not gonna go into details, but you know, there's like no noise on Sunday or a federal holiday. Again, to make living if you live near or adjacent a thrift store, it is okay. That is not gonna be too noisy for them. Donation boxes, we do have some donation boxes in the city and in most cities you can see them a lot. Donation boxes can be clothing, can be books, can be other items, a lot of stuff. And so a donation box is an intended bin, box, container, storage shed, trailer, receptor or something that can solicit the collection of donation of items, right? Again, they are allowed in the city, but again, we're putting, we're practicing some guidance. So then it will make it a little bit applicable or basically cleaning it up a little bit. So what that means here is dumping of oversized items like e-waste and hazardous waste is prohibited at one of these collection boxes. And it should be unlawful to operate donation box without, for some gain, the city issued permit that we are aware and monitor these. We just had neighborhood preservation here, team tonight, as one of their things that they go out there on the daily route is to kind of watch that stuff. And again, through the permit process, if you're aware of it, you can monitor it and much better and basically make it more. Again, I call it applicable for nicer to our residents and our constituents here. Again, that's just a really brief item. Again, I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
I did have one question. Is there any way that we can notify our landowners that they cannot make agreements with these donation boxes without first coming through the city? Because that's what they're doing. They're going to the shopping center landowners. And they're okaying it and not realizing that they actually have to get a permit through the city.
I think we could reach out to property owner, the landowner and tell them the process.
Right, tell them the process.
Correct.
Because I just don't think they know.
Yes.
Okay.
We're making the process.
Yeah, this, the regulations, if approved, would require that there's a city issued permit on file. So as Ron noted, the city's aware that someone's operating one of these uses. But part of that application is you have to show that you actually have the consent of the underlying property owner or a leaseholder. So, you know, in other cities, there's been instances where people just basically drop these things off the trailer. And if you're dealing with a big corporation like CVS or something, who knows how long it's gonna take them to even realize it's in their lot. So, and then, you know, the other upside of having that permitting system in place now is that it gives the city an enforcement mechanism because now we have a municipal code, so it's unlawful to operate one of these unless you've gone through all these steps to actually have a city issued permit.
Thank you.
I have a question about impeding vehicular or pedestrian traffic or obstruct required parking. Does that mean it cannot be in what would normally be a parking space? Or as long as there's additional parking spaces, it doesn't matter? Like, what's the, what's the logic with that?
So I think for impeding vehicular traffic, it would be kind of obvious stuff, like not parking this thing in a way that it's gonna cut short a drive aisle or make some sort of, you know, pinch point in terms of how vehicles would move through a lot. And then as far as the parking's concerned, if a shopping center is parked per our code, meaning they have, let's say they have 30 spots that are required, you're not gonna be able to put a donation bin in a place that takes up two of those spots because you have to maintain the code required parking. If they're overparked, you know, maybe that's fine, but, but staff will look at every instance to make sure from a zoning perspective that we still have the required parking.
Thank you, sir.
You want to speak, don't you?
I really do. I, I just wanted to say that, that from a holistic standpoint, that there'll be a number of these kind of reviews that we're currently doing that we'll then bring back to the city council. And honestly, it's really just a, a lot of cleanup, but also taking a look at different places where the state might have changed regulations and making sure that they match up with what we have here locally. And then obviously making sure that we get it all in one place so there's no confusion. So I would anticipate you'll be seeing one of these probably every quarter or so, so.
This is a public hearing, so I do need to open it up for public comment. Robert, do you have anything to say?
No, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, back to my colleagues here. Are there any other questions? All right, can I get a motion in a second? Oh, sorry. City Attorney, can you please read the title of the ordinance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before the council for consideration this evening is ordinance number 2025-11 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Amending Various Provisions of Title 17 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning the Regulation of Thrift Stores and Donation Boxes, Front Yard Landscaping Requirements, Screening of Mechanical Equipment and to Correct Clerical Errors and Omissions to Maintain Internal Consistency. In addition, there's ordinance number 2025-12, which is entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Adding Chapter 5.54 to Title 5 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code Concerning the Regulation of Unattended Donation Boxes.
Thank you. Now can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, down to item 12. This is the second reading of the 2025 Building Standards Code and Fire Adoption Staff Report. Or did I just do it?
Thank you as well, sir. Thank you. Again, Mayor, members of City Council. At our regular meeting, which was September 15, 2025, council adopted ordinance, two ordinances. The first ordinance was in regard.
Ron, your mic is not on.
Is that better?
There you go.
I will start over.
Well, I want it to be picked up.
Oh, no, it just sounds like a, never mind.
The regular meeting, which was September 15, city council adopted two ordinances. The first ordinance was in regard to adopting the California Building Code. And the second one was an ordinance in regards to the 2025 California Fire Code provided by OCFA. So council did adopt that, and after adoption, we then sent it up to the building, the California Building Standard Commission, the CBSC, where they reviewed it for acceptance, and they did find some clerical, some, some minor errors and informed us. And so that's why we brought it back here to inform the council and the public that there was some changes, some slight changes again. So these change, these errors included, the building code amendment is listed in the body of the document, but not in the finding summary at the end of the document, so we made that change. Reference to fire code section numbers that were changed in the latest California Fire Code, but not updated in the ordinance that we provided. We made that revision and an update to reference section in the building code ordinance disreferences regarding wildland urban interface, where the CBSC requested some verbiage be changed due to the WI, wildland urban interface no longer being its own chapter. And so we made those revisions, and so we presented it back to council for adoption. And then again, after adoption, we send it back up to the state for acceptance.
Great. Council have any questions? All right. City Attorney, would you like to read the title of this ordinance?
I am pleased to report that having read this in full at our August meeting, there will be no need to go through that process again tonight. I would just simply note that staff's recommendation is to adopt or introduce both ordinances. And then this will come back on consent at our next regular meeting.
So you don't have to read those. Okay, can I get a motion in a second, please?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what else do we have? Okay, discussion item, capital improvement project updates. Dr. Noda, I think this is you too.
Yes, Mayor. Again, okay, so this report here is a discussion item for an update on our capital improvement projects. I'll get closer. That's better. So capital improvement project CIPs, as you're aware, are very important to the city because it provides enhancing our infrastructure. These infrastructures include streets, buildings, parks, striping on streets, light poles, et cetera. And these projects improves, basically ranging from, you know, compliance from ADA to of course, modernizing public facility. As you are aware, before we passed our sales tax measure back in a few years ago, you know, the City of Los Alamos was in some financial difficulties, and so a lot of maintenance and CIP projects were deferred. So we've been on a toward pace on creating and strengthening our infrastructure according to the fiscal pledge that the city council has adopted and just, I believe, a month or two ago renewed their adoption, adoption and their faith in that fiscal pledge. So today, we're gonna go over some of the updates. It's a receive and file. And then we're gonna discuss some additional projects recommended by our traffic commission. And then thirdly, we want to provide, if you, if council desires to, direction to staff, okay? So I'm gonna go really quick because we have a list of CIP projects update, right? And again, please stop me if you have any questions. So the first one here is we did a street improvement project, CIP number 23-20 slash 24-03. This project was the grind and overlay, which is basically we tear up the street, put new asphalt down, slurry seals, we coat the seal. And in residential, at the same time, we replaced damaged curbs, gutters and lifted sidewalks and of course took a look at ADA complacency and everything. So again, I'm not gonna go over the list, but there was many streets. It's in the staff report. The reason why this was delayed a little bit because we did a very last, I want an item of note here is we, this project here assisted the, the street, the sidewalk and the driveway approach to OCFA's Fire Station Two, which we recently completed. And therefore, we can close that out. I believe it is on our agenda item today as a notice of completion. Another one we're working on is Cotella Street Design Project, CIP number 23 slash 24 dash 04. So Cotella Avenue is the major arterial for the City of Los Alamos. It accommodates over 30,000 vehicles. Last time I heard, it's probably the intersection of Los Alamos and Cotella is the third busiest intersection of all of Orange County. We are a gateway, the, basically from LA County into Orange County, and a lot of cars go up and down that streets. And when I say cars, I also mean trucks, right? 18-wheelers and everything. So we are in design right now, and the reason why is we want to have what we call a shovel-ready project. So when we come up to a grant that will assist us in renovating Cotella Street, we're ready to go. Unfortunately, sometimes when these, these grants come up, they only allow us four weeks. Sometimes even shorter to get the grant in. And so we have to be prepared for that because to do a full-blown assessment and design of Cotella does not, it, it takes much, much longer than four weeks. So we are almost complete in this design and there, once we complete, we're ready to apply for any upcoming grants. Pine Street Project, CIP number 24 dash slash 25 dash 05. Council will recall that the city was awarded a federal $5 million complete street grant to reimagine Pine Street. Pine Street is known as our downtown sector as it hosts a lot of the city event. We had one in September called Celebrate Los Alamos. We have Nights on Pine, which was last Thursday, the summer concert series hosted by Recreation. And then we have Winter Wonderland coming up in December, right? And so this, basically redesigning the street to make it a gathering point for the city with widening the street, putting new poles, putting landscaping in there and ADA complacency again. So design is nearly complete and we'll bring back the design for traffic commission to review and recommend to move forward. Bloomfield Avenue Project, it's an active transportation project. This one here, we received a 575,000 grant from former congressional representative Michelle Steele. The Bloomfield Avenue Project is an active transportation plan project will, will create bike lanes, improve crosswalks, improve sidewalks. Improving the crosswalk will also include adding a mid-block, what we call a Hawk System crosswalk. It's one of the best safety crosswalk we can get out there. Design is nearly complete and we'll be bringing it back to the traffic commission at an upcoming meeting. SB1 Oak Street Project, SB1 is a state transportation program dedicated to funding road repair. The money comes from gas tax and vehicle tax. Oak Street has been identified for the SB1 project after the Orange County Sanitation District project is complete. If recall, when OC Sand came through a couple of years ago, we did a lot of the other Old Town West streets and we were waiting for Oak Street because of the fact that they were gonna tear that street up. That project is complete, and so we're getting ready to do that street, right? And so design is done. We took it to the traffic commission and construction is slated to begin in spring of '25. And yes, we will work with the school district to get that scheduled. Now, we have another street improvement project that's coming up. I told you the first one, we're wrapping up. This one is for this upcoming year. We will probably start that in probably late spring, early summer, and it'll go through the summer hopefully. So again, it's a citywide project to repair damaged pavement, streets, slurry seal by or grind and overlay. What I want to mention here is people is gonna ask, how do we pick streets to fix? And so we have a couple of things. So every two years, we have to do what we call a pavement management plan, a PMP, which uses a pavement condition index. So basically, we go out there, we look at the street, we have these markers that we have to do, and then we grade the streets, basically. And so when we go out there, and there's a lot of factors that go on, but basically the main factor is these streets, we, we tackle the worst PCI streets first. Now, sometimes you say, I just gave an example, Oak Street. Oak Street's not in the greatest condition. But the reason why we held off on that was because we knew that OC Sand was coming. So it wouldn't be smart for us to go repair the street. They're gonna tear the street up. And then they're gonna fix the street as part of their project, but they're not gonna fix the street completely. So then you're gonna, so that's why we kind of took a, a more methodical approach in picking a street. So again, we do reply on the pavement management plan, which has a PCI index, but there are some other factors involved in terms of picking a street. So again, we do reply on the pavement management plan, which has a PCI index, but there are some, um, other factors involved in terms of picking a street. Okay? So again, these streets are coming. Um, Walnut Street, Florissa Street and Farquhar Streets are the ones chosen for the improvement coming up. Hey, wanna keep going? Any questions so far? All right, we're going Reagan Street Improvement. So this one here, we're gonna do Reagan Street from Cotella to Farquhar and we're gonna use the money from CDBG or Community Development Block Grant. CDBG, if people don't know, is a federal funding source that assists cities in improving neighborhoods. And so, uh, this one has a multi-step process because we have to go and get a recommendation. We have to, um, notice it that we're gonna pick, uh, a CDBG project. We have to notice it. The medium for, uh, or the, uh, the avenue for the people, the people that chooses the CDBG project is the Planning Commission. So we went to the Planning Commission, again, showing them the PMP and the PCI, saying that Reagan Street is a street that we need to do. And they approved it. And so now, um, it's up with the CDBG group to, um, see if they approve it. And if so, um, we will start this project in terms of design and getting this done before the year end of twenty twenty-six. Okay? Cotella Avenue Striping, street strapping, street striping is important for safety for anyone using the street, pedestrian, bicyclist, motorist. Um, proper lane and crosswalk markings help people navigate the road. So Cotella Avenue Striping was in a, uh, very faded, uh, from Epsom Way all the way to Walker Street. So we went out there, um, went through the process, uh, bid it out, awarded the bid, and so this project is completed. So if you go up and down Cotella, you'll see that it's freshly painted with really nice markings. Yes?
So the, um, and I'm gonna go back just one.
Okay.
The Reagan Street Improvement. Is there some sort, because I know exactly the area and most of it is, um, it gets torn up because of the fire truck. So is there some sort of reinforcing that happens because of the, the type of truck that, I love the fire truck, be clear. But, um, I know that that's what's, because it's that strip right there that's, that gets torn up. So is there some sort of reinforcing that happens when they go right there?
A couple of things here. One is when we went out there to, um, fix some of the broken asphalt, broken, um, driveway approach, uh, we made an internal decision to not put just, um, asphalt in front of the station. We replaced it with a concrete pad. Right? So concrete is much more durable than asphalt. So.
I'm talking about Reagan.
Yeah, so going up and down Reagan, um, it's nothing different, but because of, again, the, the council's pledge for infrastructure, we now have an annual, um, street rehab, um, pro, uh, you know, maintenance pro, uh, program. And so we are doing a better job maintenance. So basically we grind and overlay and every few years we go out there to slurry seal. When we slurry seal, that will prolong the life of the asphalt. So we have a program to prolong it as much as we can. Um, as you are aware, some council member, we went to, um, the leading California cities. There were some vendors there. They are saying that they can pick, mix some, uh, mixtures into the asphalt to prolong it even more. So we're gonna take a look at that. Okay? Good question. Thank you. We're moving on. Neighborhood signage replacement project. So again, neighborhood signage, whether it's traffic signs or wayfaring signs is, um, very, is important. Well-maintained signs ensure that drivers, bicyclists and pedestrians can navigate traffic regulation, directions and warnings. So part of this, we do have a sign pollution problem in our city. And so part of this project was a citywide assessment to make sure that signage was installed properly. We did that. We've completed that. We've inserted that into our GIS system. And so now we're tackling neighborhood to neighborhood. So we're gonna tackle the biggest neighborhood first, which is Midtown. So we, uh, the Public Works Division is gearing up. We have ordered the signs. We've ordered equipment. Um, the, the replacement of the signage will begin in January of twenty-six. Labyrinth Park Project, uh, again, council's aware, we were there for the, um, ribbon cutting, but this is again newly play equipment, upgraded safety, enhancing ADA. This project is, um, is completed, but in the report it says it's completed, uh, expected by next month because we are missing a power pedestal to, um, to, um, handle the power, provide power to our irrigation system. So as of right now, um, Public Works is out there irrigating by hand, but until we get this power pedestal, uh, irrigation, so that's why it's not completed just yet. But in terms of use of the park, the play equipment, the landscaping, um, all that, it's all done and it's being used by the, um, community as we speak. Sir Optimus Park, CIP number twenty-four dash slash twenty-five dash oh eight. This one again was duh, uh, and I'm sorry, this one is, uh, we did a groundbreaking not too long ago. Construction is underway. This will replace the, um, play equipment and the wood chip into a modern play equipment with safety servicing. This won't be completed by December twenty twenty-five, so look on the horizon, um, council, but we will do a ribbon cutting at that time. Stansberry, Stansberry Park Design. So right now, I just signed the, um, purchase order for this, um, last week that we're gonna go into design right now for Stansberry Park. Uh, so design includes assessment. So our contract will out there assess the park and then design for the park. This one will take a little bit of time because the property is not owned by the city. It's owned by the Metropolitan Water Company. So we have to work with them to make sure that everything is compliant on their end because there's water, um, lines underneath that park. But again, at the end of the day, we will improve, um, the existing condition, improve the play equipment, ADA complacency and landscaping. Dog Park at Laurel Park, uh, the Public Works Division is, is hard at work getting this brand-new dog park to be installed at Laurel Park. It's gonna go out, um, kinda to adjacent by the, um, tennis courts next to, um, um, was that, Los Alamos Elementary School. So this dog park will have two play areas, one play area for small dog, second, a play area for a medium large dog and two dog runs in the back. So it's quite a large dog park. Uh, we are slated to be completed with that dog park in December twenty twenty-five. So again, we will have a ribbon cutting when that time comes. Fire Alarm System, the upgrading of the Fire Alarm System, Community Center One. Um, our friends at OCFA says it's important for us to have a fire alarm system and I agreed. And so, uh, we're out there doing this project right now. Um, we went through the whole bid process, the design process, the assessment process. This project is slated to begin in November. Um, Council Chamber Emergency Operation, ELC Conversion. This is a CIP project that we're still working on. Um, we're almost done and we'll be bringing that project to, um, council for approval hopefully in, um, um, November. Okay? And that's basically converting our, uh, Community Center Two, which was formerly known as the Youth Center Building into a multipurpose building. It will be a recreation facility during the day. It will be, um, uh, council chambers or holding public meetings like our traffic commissions, our park, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission. And then it will also operate as an emergency operations center, ELC during times of need. So it's a multipurpose facility for us. EV Charging Stations. Again, council's aware that, uh, we have awarded a bid and we will begin shortly our citywide electric vehicle, um, transportation system. So in part of that, when the four vehicle comes in, we have to have electric vehicle charging stations secured. And so we are working that in our city yard. Um, and so we are set to install that in November with hope of launching the program in, um, probably January of twenty-six. Emergency Generator Project. So, um, this one here is for the Police and Information, um, Technology Room or IT Room. Um, these two areas are critical facilities. So when the system or power goes down, we still need to have safety services, public safety, police department and our IT department. I talk around and say that our IT building, it's a small room, but it's the most expensive room in the city. It houses millions and millions of, uh, dollars of our equipment, servers and everything. And so it's a critical to have the power up because if our servers are not powered up, um, longer than a few hours, then it will go down and break, basically. So again, um, our emergency general project is, um, working on that. Um, we're almost done with design. Uh, we had to go through a lot of hoops and hurdles to get this done, but we're almost there. And so I would say the first quarter of twenty-six, council will see an RFP be presented to them. At the same time, we are working on the emergency generator project for Community Center, the large building, Community Center One, because the community center is designated as a shelter facility in times of need. And during a shelter facility, you need to have emergency power as well. So again, we're almost done with design and again, we will be bringing that to council hopefully in the first quarter of twenty-six. There was a parking lot island removal. It used to be an old gas station that we did many years ago in our public work yard. Uh, we basically, uh, got rid of that be, to, you know, satisfy some environmental needs and just make driving in our yard a little bit easier. So that project has been completed. We have sunburst field improvements. Um, we're right now in assessment of that. Um, again, that will address items such as the snack shack, ADA requirements, painting of buildings and dugouts, some landscaping and improvement of playing surfaces. Um, we will probably get that done. We have to work with the, um, the facility to find a time because we need anywhere between eight to ten weeks. We are thinking that'll probably be winter time. But, uh, we have to get a contract and agreement in place first. So, um, again, once that is coming, we will come to council for final approval. Okay? So those are the ones that we currently, as you can tell, it's a long list of stuff that, uh, our team is working on diligently, trying to get it done. Um, I have a big motto that says on budget, on time. And so we're trending towards that. Um, there are some, so here's the discussion item. So our traffic commission has identified several projects and lists them as a public safety priority. These projects were not approved in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and were deferred. Again, the traffic commission is, um, recommending these three projects as, as a public safety priority and would like implementation, um, probably at mid-year, during mid-year, right? I'm gonna go over briefly the three projects they recommend. The first one is a Bradbury-Rossmore Way Traffic Signal Relocation. These are the two entrances that go into the Highland neighborhood, the Rossmore Highland neighborhood. There is a complacency issue there because the poles, to walk around the poles misses the, the, uh, the ADA width to go about it. And so we do have a design in play, full-blown design, um, but, uh, it basically will be a bulb out, right? And a, and a shortening of the median so cars can go in, but the bulb out will create the, the adequate ADA complacency to walk around the poles. Uh, there is a lot of hoopla because if you go in there to change our side in terms of Los Alamos side, you have to change entire intersection to make sure the entire intersection is compliant. So that's working with the city of Seal Beach and the county of Orange because they own the other side going into Rossmore. It's a huge deal. So that's why the engineer estimate is the project for the project is six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars because it's not just doing bolt ballots and getting rid of concrete. We have to go across the other way and work with the other entities to make the full intersection ADA and public safety in terms of CVC code, California Vehicle Codes, complacency.
Are we on the hook for that as well or just our side?
Just our side.
But theirs isn't like that on the others unless I'm remembering it wrong.
No, it mostly has to do with their signal lights. It's not like tall enough.
But our issue is the, the pole is in the middle of the sidewalk. So their issue is something.
Something else.
Separate.
Yeah, but once you go in, you have to make sure the whole intersection is done right. Not just Los Alamos side.
Oh, good. The camera's on you. I just realized. Well, is there, um, is there any progress toward, because I actually is, um, I'm a fan of that one just because I've seen mothers with strollers have to walk into the street or, you know, people with bikes or what, smaller kids with bikes and whatever. But what is, what are the odds that we would be able to get that done, bearing in mind that we would have to work with Seal Beach and the county?
It's gonna take a while. So we, if, again, we, if, if council wants one, two, all three of these projects, we will have to go through our mid-year process to see, uh, the budgetary. And then once we get that, let's say approved during the mid-year process, working with the county and the city of Seal Beach, this will probably be anywhere between an eighteen to twenty-four month project for us.
Once we get everybody together.
Correct.
If I, if I can, so one of the, the important thing with all this and that you noticed from this list, it's all driven by money at the end of the day. And so if the council, through your deliberations and then probably more importantly, through our discussion about the mid-year budget and how exactly we want to pull that together, if it becomes a priority for the council, we can start that process with them while they're going through their budget cycling as well. And then hopefully by the time we get to the end of the year, hope, maybe well, everybody will see eye to eye and at least have a commitment that this is something we want to do. I would imagine then the question will become, okay, well, now can you go out and find a way to fund it? And that's when I think, uh, you know, some solidarity with our neighbors next door, we might be able to accomplish something at that point. Um, but again, it.
So start the conversation now, bearing in mind it's going to be.
Exactly.
I'm just concerned about the legal exposure. If we're ready to break ground now, but it's taken twelve to eighteen months to get everybody on the same page. And then there's a funding issue with one of our partners. We're still at risk.
It's true. You're definitely. And, and that's one of the things, if you look through all of these projects and there's twenty-some odd projects, they're all aimed at correcting a issue that potentially creates liability at the end of the day. And so, and I think the council's done a great job. I'd also like to point out just as a side note that the number of these projects that also have money coming from outside entities to pay for them.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's based on your guys' work as much as, uh, the staff's work. So thank you for your support in that.
Okay, next.
Next. All right. Los Alamos Boulevard Sidewalk Repair. This is, there's a sidewalk that is on Los Alamos Boulevard past the high school. It's like, if you can picture in your mind, it's by, if you're standing on the sidewalk, you can see the softball fields, right? It's right before you get into that, um, the Coyote Creek Drainage Channel. There is a sidewalk because there's a driveway that goes into the channel that is not ADA compliant, right? There's no ADA ramp there, all right? And so we've gotta go in there. We'd have to do the ADA ramp. And so again, um, it's a, it's an ADA complacency thing. And then, then, next thing you know here is because of the drop-off from that sidewalk down, we probably have to install railings. Right? And so you can see right here that the engineer estimate for that is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Is there any funding out there right now for ADA since it's such a, a hot item at the moment to become ADA compliant? Is there any funding, uh, availability?
We will have our grant, uh, partners take a look to see if we could identify specific ADA. Yes. Okay? Last one here is a citywide safety light replacement. So the city owns approximately twenty-six of the lights. So we're not talking about the SCE lights. We're talking about the, the traffic signal lights and above the traffic signal is a, what we call a safety light. We in Los Alamos owns the traffic signal. There's about twenty-six of them in the city. Um, right now, most of those have the older, uh, style, what we call HPS bulb. You can kinda tell because they're kinda like, um, orange looking, yellow, orange looking. Um, and so the, the approach that Development Service is taking is when a light bulb goes out, one out of the four, we will go in there and replace all four with the newer LED style bulbs. Okay? We actually have a traffic order, I mean, a, uh, service request right now to do two intersections because one of the bulbs are out. And so we're gonna change those two intersections, all four into LED. Our traffic commission is requesting to do all of it all at one time, right? And so that would go in there and do all, you know, well, twenty-six minus four is about twenty-four, right? Intersection or so, twenty-three intersections. And so the engineer estimate to do all of them is a hundred and forty thousand. Okay? Those are the three. Um, again, we talked about the budget. We talked about the city manager. Thank you. Uh, talked about the mid-year process. So again, we just need a little direction on how council would like for us to proceed.
Ron, there was also something that I believe we put on the CIP list years ago coming out of the traffic commission. And it was when you're going south on Cherry and making that left-hand turn, you're turning right into a crosswalk. And we had talked about moving that to the west.
Yes.
So they can turn left and you're not playing Pac-Man with pedestrians.
Correct.
Is that still on the CIP list?
No, that's not a CIP list. That's a, uh, that's a traffic order, uh, right and stuff. So right now, our traffic engineer is assessing to see if it's attainable to move it to the other side. Now, I'm gonna tell you, when we move it to the other side, the magic word, the three letters, we're gonna deal with some ADA complacency issues. Okay? So that's not as easy as just tearing out a, uh, striping crosswalk and moving to the other side. We will have to address some ADA complacency issues when we get there. Right now, he's assessing to see, because I asked him to do a car count. Because, um, yes, you're taking a left into a crosswalk, but if you move it to the other side, you're doing a right turn into a crosswalk. And I, I feel that there's more cars to making a right turn than making a left turn. But we're gonna do a, a vehicle count to see if that's.
Is, is there any way we could just read time the light where, when they have the okay to walk, all lights are red to give them that opportunity? Because a lot of people are walking across over into the medical center and everything. There is quite a, there is some pedestrian thing there, but just rather changing the light timing so people have the ability to walk across with no cars going.
So yes, Cotella Street, Cotella Avenue is on light synchronization all the way through. So we could take a look at that.
Okay. Okay, any questions?
So I have, um, two statements. Number one, I believe with all of these December. Number one, I believe with all of these December due dates, that we should probably make a concentrated and concerted effort to get most of these ribbon cut-ins or ground break-ins or whatever done like the first or second week of December.
No, I understand, yes.
I'll bring you on scissors.
Understood.
I know, you know what I'm talking about.
We'll bring the scissors.
She will have her own scissors and her own ribbon, so listen, y'all better get it together. And then, next, as far as my own personal, my hierarchy with the light replacement, because if you don't wait for one to go out, you are potentially replacing lights that are fine. So that would be my least, I think that'd be number three, and I think the first two can actually be worked on concurrently, since the first one is going to be a bit more arduous and time-consuming, but the ADA complacency, if we could get funding for it, but I know exactly where you're talking about, and the easier and the safer that we can keep people always the better, but that's my.
Yeah, I would prefer the first priority would be the sidewalk, because especially when Autumn Fest was going on, we had a ton of walkers, and there were kids in the street going against the traffic. So that just seems like it's gonna take the longest, but it's also the most urgent.
Understood. And also, just for, just to put your guys' minds at ease as well, we'll be talking to the other commissions, and obviously, they're gonna have ideas as well, so we wanna make sure that we're giving it, you the whole snapshot, because at some point, we might have to start making choices, not just priority, but yeah, that's a project for two years from now, after we've figured out how we're gonna fund it or vice versa. So this is really, I'll call it, the first step in this process.
Yeah, but I would definitely work on the county and getting Seal Beach on board sooner as opposed to later.
Of course.
Any other questions? Okay, this is a receiving file, so we don't have to vote on anything?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Council announcements, before I pass this on, I would like to close tonight's meeting in memory of Melinda Breedlove. She was a baseball mom, had three kids, Amanda, Lance, and Kyle, two grandkids, and another one on the way. She passed away a couple of weeks ago from a short bout with cancer. We had her memorial service yesterday over at Fiddler's, and it was a party, just like she always liked that, so condolences out to the family, and I would just like to close tonight in her memory. Councilmember Lowe.
I'm good.
You're good?
Looking at me? We've got nothing to report.
Mayor Protem Doby. She's got colored charts and everything. No, this is, it's just, I write it out, that's their last sheet there. So I went to my mosquito and vectors meeting, obviously, I go to my mosquito and vectors meetings, but the one thing that, and just so that everybody knows, gentle reminder, all the information that I receive, I send over to our city clerk and I get it loaded onto our website, but the one thing that I would like to point out is, there is a significant difference between the two types of red ants, and one of them is a red fire ant. That little booger will ruin your whole evening. But the way you know the difference is the other red ants, they're not as honorary, they're not as territorial, they're huge, but they're all huge. The red fire ants, they're all different sizes. So if you see some red ants, and they're all different sizes, you run, yes, and then you can let vectors know, and they will come out, and they will spray, and they will treat, and they'll take care of it, because it is, it's especially dangerous to small children. And then, I went to my OCAG board meeting, we have selected a new executive director, it is Mr. Brian Probloski, I think that's how you pronounce his name, and sir, forgive me if that's wrong. I also attended the mural unveiling at the American Legion, and just stopped by to see the artistry, because the artwork of the Coast Guard, I just kept wanting to reach my hand out back to him, because it looks like I could literally touch him, it was so amazingly done. And the gentleman that painted, it was like six months of late nights, early mornings, he had his family out there, his children out there, but it is a beautiful labor of love, highly recommend you go check that out. I also attended our spectacular Elevate Women's Conference, and you know that a conference is good when you still have full tables at the end. And this year, I think we might have lost, we'll call it 5% of total attendance, it was so amazing. There were speakers that are already like trying to come back next year, like, can I speak again, can I just come again, how do, can I bring friends? So I'm looking to be sold out next year. I also attended the Pathways to Independence event. The Pathways as an organization is absolutely phenomenal, their mission is just, they help young women get back on track. They help them with housing, they help them with employment, they help them with transportation, and it's at no charge to the young ladies, like, it is absolutely mind-blowing. And the event itself was amazing, I recommend you at least go once. I fulfilled my alternate duties at the OC SAN meeting, I was my alternate, and then I went to the State of the District, where Dr. Pulver puts on a phenomenal show, and they did something that really moved me, it was because it's, they were basically saying, "I'm better because of," and then they would name a person, and they would say, "This is why you made me better." And it just made me think of like our staff and my colleagues, and wondering like, how do we make each other better? So I want y'all to have that on your mind when you're going about your day, so that you can keep whatever the vision is larger than you. When you look past yourself, like, what am I doing today that will make somebody else better? That is what ministered to me there. And then I was at the graduation ceremony for Officer Gibson, thank you, sir. And then I went to the, I did not attend the Cal City's conference, but I did break in to the OC Division swearing in, so that I could see our mayor hassle rank be sworn in as our Division One Lead, which is a big deal, because Orange County's voice gets pretty diluted when you put us up against all of California, so we need good, strong voices in those, in those positions of leadership to keep everybody on the right track. And then, I went to the open house for Fire Station Two, and they no longer have shower curtains that cover their bedrooms, they have like bathroom doors now, but progress, we're making progress, so that's what I've been up to.
All right. Got everybody? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 7:37. See you in November.